Come to order, can I start with a roll call?
James Meyer.
Aziz Assam.
Norma Drummond.
Tara Franco.
We do have our, one of our members is absent tonight, one of our alternate members should be joining us shortly, so we'll take it from there when she gets here. So in the meantime, can I ask everyone to stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, our next two meetings are Tuesday, July 8th, and Tuesday, August 12th. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of April 8th?
So moved.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. And a motion to approve the minutes for May 14th?
I wasn't here.
That's fine. So we have a, we have a motion, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and abstention?
Yes, James Meyer.
Okay, thank you. And Julie, I just want to thank you for stepping in and helping us with those minutes. So I know you were not here to physically watch it, but you did a really, you did a great job on the minutes, so thank you. All right, so this evening, the first part of our meeting is where we go do public hearings. These are appeals that we've seen already, and the board has kind of worked through some of the issues or raised some questions. But now, at this point, we want to hear from neighbors, because you probably know the sites better than we would. So the first part of our, we have a couple of public hearings, and then we will go to reviews, which are generally developments or appeals that we have not seen yet. I don't have anything, but actually, appeal number eight is pulled from the agenda because the applicant has requested to be on the July meeting. But otherwise, everything else is as it should be. So we'll start, we have a public hearing, appeals 3668 Calcutta, Joseph Calcutta, 131 Martin Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a five-foot sideline variance for our proposed 26-foot by 28-foot garage pursuant to section 194-107(c) of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, Mr. Calcutta. Sorry, let me just get all my papers in order. Hold it back. Hold it back. Oh, sorry. Yeah. I figured as much. Okay. All right, so last month, we saw your, we walked through your request, you're looking for a detached garage. You have a, you had a very long lot, we talked about that, actually, we didn't see you last month, I think, right?
No.
Saw you the month before, right. We talked about the fact that you actually have a significant drop-off in the topography of your site if you went back any further or, and over, you wanted to be able to leave some distance between your home and the garage, just to be able to...
You know, to back out of the other garage, I couldn't even do it, otherwise. I thought about that after we left, I mean, to back out, to go out of the driveways, it's not even possible, out of one bay there, if I was right up against it like we talked about.
But we did talk about that you were gonna have, you were gonna require an eight-foot retaining wall to be able to do this until, unless we talked about you putting it under the foundation of the...
I liked what you guys brought up.
Okay. And so, just to be sure, can you just, are you now changed it, you've moved it, or you...
Well, I mean, you guys made it sound like that's what I had to do, so that's what I'm, you know.
That's why you like...
No, it's a better idea, too, you know what?
Well, it's gonna save you a lot of work in the long run, because it saves you the engineering associated with that retaining wall.
Right. And I did take measurements on, you know, you were talking about all the dirt and the fill.
Right.
I mean, I...
Yeah, that was one of the things that we were concerned about, is how much fill were you going to be needing to bring in, because there is a limit on how much any property owner can bring in each year, so...
The depth was, the deepest point was six feet, and it was, I just had the paperwork with me, I must have left it in the truck. It was like, I measured 28 feet off the house before the first beginning of the drop, and at the other end, it was like, it was exactly 22 feet, so...
Right.
I mean, and it was six foot at the deepest, so it's really not that much of a, I don't think it is.
Okay. Any questions or comments from board members?
I'm okay.
Is there anyone here to speak for or against the appeal from Joseph Calcutta, 131 Martin Road, requesting a five-foot sideline variance for a proposed 26-foot by 28-foot garage? Oh, hold on, folks, do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
We did.
We did? Thank you, I did write it down. Wow, it's gonna be a long night. Sorry. Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Usually, I write it down, so I don't have to question myself.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. And...
Question on this?
Yes, please.
I don't have the, it's not in time. I'm asking if we'll have a written one.
It's here, yeah, it's right here.
Okay. And referenced appeal number 3668 by Joseph Calcutta, seeking a five-foot sideline variance for proposed 26-by-28-foot detached garage to be located at 131 Martin Road, Hopewell Junction, and resolution being offered by zoning board member James Meyer, and whereas the applicant has applied to the zoning board for a five-foot sideline variance for proposed 26-by-28 garage pursuant to section 194-107(c) of the zoning ordinance, whereas this is a type-two action under SEACR and no further action is required, and whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Duchess News on May 28, 2014, and whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing this evening, June 10, 2014, and whereas the zoning board of appeals finds, the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the community, the desired result cannot be achieved by some other means as the applicant's subject fields are in one area and his property also backs up to the creek, the variance requested is not substantial, the proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood, now therefore, be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request made by Joseph Calcutta, 131 Martin Road, Hopewell Junction, of the zoning ordinance, be it further resolved that within five business days of this, of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant/owner.
Is there a second?
A second.
Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
And myself, aye, so your motion carries, you're all set.
All right, thank you.
Okay. All right, item number two, appeal 3672, Odelli and Akimo Lattin, sorry if I'm saying this wrong, Deborah Odelli and Andrew Akimo Lattin, 10 Circle Drive, Hopewell Junction, requesting permission to keep an existing 12-foot by 12-foot gazebo in front of the rear line of the house, meeting the required setbacks, and a 15-foot sideline and 15-foot rear line variance for a proposed 10-foot by 12-foot shed pursuant to section 194-107(b)(2) of the zoning ordinance.
I don't see the applicant.
Okay, do I have a motion to put this on for second call?
So moved.
All right. Is there a second? There are, the applicant does not appear to be here, are there any neighbors who wanted to speak related to this appeal? All right, then, let's put this on for second call, motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we'll, we'll take this up at the end, all right, in case the applicant shows up in the meantime. Appeal number three, appeal 3675, Hanson, William C. Hanson, 14 Saddle Ridge Drive, Saddle Ridge Drive, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 15-foot sideline variance for an existing 20-foot by 16-foot shed pursuant to section 194-107(c) of the zoning ordinance. Good evening, do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. All right, we did go through your requests last time, your, your couple houses in from Route 376.
On the fifth house on the right, correct.
Right. And your, as you're driving up Saddle Ridge Road, the shed is there, it's pretty visible, but you've got such a slope in your backyard that we talked about the fact that it would be quite difficult for you to actually get in there and get it moved. You do have big trees behind it, and so we didn't, certainly didn't want to be removing any trees if we could help it. And it's also been there for a number of years, so it was very...
Quite a few.
Yeah, maybe it was, it was very nicely maintained, it was, you know, I didn't, I personally didn't see any issues related to where it was, so...
Thank you. And I have signed, signed statements from my neighbors.
Thank you. I'll read those into the record real quick.
I'll just pull up my papers.
Okay. And you have pictures, super.
And they also show from my closest paper.
Right.
Under deck.
Right.
As you see, there's pine trees, basically.
And what is this, that's your notice?
Okay.
There should be two letters?
There's two, yep.
Okay, let me read you these into the record real quick, from Mark and Michelle Clopper, 14 Saddle Ridge Drive, "Sir, Mrs., I am writing in regard to my next-door neighbor's shed on the property. I and my wife have lived at our current residence since November 2011. Mr. and Mrs. Hanson are our next-door neighbors. The shed in question is well-maintained, does not encroach on any property lines along my property, and in no way impedes or disturbs the use of our property. Thank you in advance for your concern of the matter." And the second one, sent from Mark and Linda Giardino, 12 Saddle Ridge Drive, "This letter is being sent in regard to our neighbors, William and Pamela Hanson, at 14 Saddle Ridge Drive. We have lived at 12 Saddle Ridge Drive for almost 24 years. The Hanson's utility shed is a well-maintained property. It does not encroach on any of our property lines, nor does it conflict with or disturb any use of our property. Should you have any further concerns or need additional information, please do not hesitate to contact us." So we have comments from neighbors, if you could pass those down to Pam for the record. Anything else you'd like to offer into the discussion?
No, I'm just, it's, as I say, the existing shed's been there 20 years, and, you know, the option would be either to get the variance or knock it down, so...
Okay. Any questions or comments from board members?
Just one of those pictures, there's a second shed, is that on your neighbor's property?
Yeah.
Sort of Dutch roof.
That's my neighbor's property, yeah, and I'll be writing a letter for him, too.
We know about it.
Oops.
But that's just one thing to note, that as far as the neighbor's concerned, sheds are not that far apart.
Right, and it was consistent with the neighborhood, definitely. All right, any other comments or questions from board members?
I'm okay, anybody in the public?
Seeing none, is...
Do you ask public?
Yeah. Is there anyone here to speak for or against, William Hanson, 14 Saddle Ridge Drive, requesting a 15-foot sideline variance for an existing 20-foot by 16-foot shed? Do I have a motion to put the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Appeal number 3675, the applicant is William Hanson, seeking a 15-foot sideline variance for an existing 20-by-16 shed at 14 Saddle Ridge Drive, Hopewell Junction, resolution offered by zoning board member Tara Franco, whereas the applicant has applied to the zoning board for a 15-foot sideline variance for an existing 20-by-16 shed pursuant to section 194-107(c) of the zoning ordinance, whereas this action is a type-two action under SEACR, no further action is required, whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Duchess News on May 28, 2014, and whereas the zoning board of appeals held a public hearing on June 10, 2014, whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that, the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the community, as the shed has been there for at least 20 years and is nested among trees, the desired result cannot be achieved by some other means, and the variance requested is not substantial, the proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood, now therefore, be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request made by William Hanson for a 15-foot sideline variance for the existing 20-by-16 shed pursuant to section 194-107(c) of the zoning ordinance, be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant/owner.
Second?
Second.
Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Your motion carries, you're all set.
Thank you very much.
Okay?
Have a good evening.
Have a good evening. Could you pass the pair, please, for the, for the record? All right, item number four, appeal 3676, Gentile, Adam Gentile, 874 Route 376, Wappingers Falls, requesting an eight-foot sideline variance for a proposed 16-foot by 36-foot in-ground pool, a 20, sorry, a two-foot sideline variance for a proposed pool patio, a 23-foot sideline variance for a pre-existing garage for which a building permit and certificate of completion have been issued, and an expansion of a non-conforming use pursuant to sections 194-95, 194-93, and 194-123 of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public evening, the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. So Mr. Gentile or Gentilly?
Either way, it's fine.
Okay, sorry. We did have a conversation last month when we reviewed your application. The board has reviewed pool, in-ground pool applications in the past, and we've always been extremely concerned about the fact that it's not really a necessity, it's more for recreational use, and so we were very careful in reviewing this, in that you appear to have some unique circumstances on your lot that others that we have reviewed in the past do not. Number one, you are in a very commercial area, you're right along 376.
Correct.
Near Stewart's, near the...
Teconic Innovations.
Yeah, Teconic Innovations, literally, your neighbor is...
Surrounded on two sides.
So your ability for your children to be able to play in the front yard is, doesn't exist.
Or the, or the garage, the driveway, which is this relatively substantial play area, but it's just very dangerous.
Yeah, you have the traffic that comes in and out of the commercial site, literally right next door, the chairs, the driveway, in fact, the driveway that is on your property.
Hundreds of trips in and out of the driveway a day.
Yes, right. So we did talk about the fact that you have an extremely long, but very, very narrow lot, and so your ability, we had talked about moving the garage, the shed over closer to the garage, but then it doesn't leave you any room at all, you, there's, you only had like a four or five-foot area there to be able to put a patio.
Even in its proposed place, it's very tight, the back corner of the garage, where the back corner of the pool meets approximately, you know, you're, at this moment, it's gonna be five or six feet, it's very, very close, so, you know, the, and like I said, I would talk to, with Rainbow about it, and, you know, he's, he basically said, you know, you've got one place, and really, that's about, and we even, afterwards, I talked to him, I went back to him, and he came back out to the house, and we talked about other pool options, and even with the, because we do want a deep end in the pool, with the smallest pool, unfortunately, it's a bulbous end, which is 16 and a half feet wide, so I didn't get any narrower, even though the pool was shorter, so it didn't really help me on the side lot variance issue.
You're right, we did actually talk about the fact that yours, the length of your pool is an oversized length, but the width of it is not.
It's the width issue, and the width is killing me, because the lot is so long.
And we talked about, could you angle the pool at a different angle, so that it actually follows the lot line?
Which is what, no.
No, follows the house line.
Tried that, and then it made it worse.
And it made it worse, exactly.
Right.
So, I mean, we really, truly did cover all of the different angles associated with the use of your property. So, you know, at this point, I think we just need, you know, if there's any other comments, Jim, I know you weren't here last time, so if there's any comments from board members, we'll start with that first.
I think everything that I was gonna say has already been said, the only thing I would like to add, one of the concerns that we had was safety and security, so if you make it further back, because you have area, then the kids would be further away from the house.
Correct.
Safety and security was another issue that we had discussed lots before.
Yeah, we had talked about that, and, and we actually, so we had to take down trees also to make this happen, you know, and we've got a lot of trees on the lot, so in the back, you know, I've got another set of 13 or 14, 80 to 100-foot pines, big diameter, so major expense, and then when we looked at it, we actually mapped the pool out in the back, and it would be, you know, it would be one heck of a sprint if one of the younger kids, because we have, you know, extended family that come over, one of the small kids went in the pool, and we were even at the back door.
Correct.
It's, it's, every second is, you know, important, so we want it to be close, and we don't want to be so detached, you know, food, and, you know, having a party with the kids and all that kind of thing, it's just...
Again, I mean, all those factors went into consideration, and again, that has already been part of the record, and I just wanted to bring in the safety and security issue also on the record.
Right. Thank you.
I'm good.
Also, you do have a fence that runs...
Yes.
So that's, the garage is actually on the outside of the fence.
Yes.
I noticed that when I drove by it the other day.
Yeah, the fence does not follow the property line, it's actually...
Right, so again, that limits your ability to move it over, because they wouldn't even just be hitting the garage, they'd be...
They'd be in the driveway.
The fence is right there, right.
That's true, too, and we, when we lined it up with the garage once, and that was just under four feet, and we still wouldn't comply with the variance on the, on the left-hand side, even if we pulled it all the way four feet and kept it, you know, perpendicular to the garage, it would, I'd still be in violation for the variance, so, and of course, you would have almost no patio at all.
Right.
And we calculate the sun angle, and that's actually the area where you'd need the patio, because that's where the sun, you know, makes contact with the pool and that area, so, you know what, we went through this, Mike's pretty good about this stuff, you know, he, you know, he doesn't just kind of schluff it off, and he helped us quite a bit, and we moved that pool around, I gotta say, at least seven, eight times, you know, thank God it wasn't an actual pool.
We went through it with you, so we, you know...
Yep.
Your septic was in the backyard as well?
Yes.
All right, so again, that became a condition of where...
Yep.
Limiting your ability to use the site.
Yep.
We did, the one thing, go ahead.
Actually, it was the dry well that was between the back door and the pool area, so that's an existing dry well for the, the sun pumps in the basement, and so he doesn't want to dig right next to that, so you were talking about pulling it up, but as far as, if we pulled it up right to the house, we'd still would never be in compliance with that left-hand side, you know, variance.
I mean, there is a high groundwater table over there, so you're probably limited in terms of what time of year you can even dig to put the pool in.
So we actually dug some test holes in the back of the property, and at three and a half to four feet, we've got water, right?
Yep, I believe that.
So when we dig a test hole, so I think the lot is, I have the map here, I think it's about 300 and something feet deep, so about a quarter of the way in, it was already, it was already, there was already no water, it's six feet deep, so the further we come towards the house, the lower the groundwater is, and that's because, if you look at the topographical map, there is a pond behind our property on the horse farm, that's part of, I think it was gonna be a project, the six ponds or the seven ponds back in the day, they were gonna build some houses, so that pond obviously is, you know, is spreading itself out underground, so as we come up towards the garage, that's when we, we got to the point, and he actually said, he goes, "Listen, I've built pools where we've had to pump water out from under the pool continuously with several pumps while we build the pool," and then they wrap the hoses back into the pool and fill the pool with the groundwater. And once the pool is filled, it's an equilibrium type of thing, so, you know, it doesn't displace itself, water's same weight, so he doesn't, yes, it's gonna cost me a little bit more, is what he said, which is kind of typical.
The words you just talked to hear, right?
Yes, of course.
The one issue that we did raise was the fact that your, not only does your, your driveway encroaches on your neighbor to the right...
Correct.
The Teconic Innovations, but also your neighbor to the left encroaches on your property.
Because on my property.
But actually, when we discussed this with the town attorney, it was, this is 376, you're on the state road, the state did take the curb cuts, this is such a pre-existing non-conforming condition that, and these lots are so skinny, we actually talked, you know, you just mentioned your lot is, it's between 315 and 319 feet deep, but it's only 78 feet wide.
Right.
So your ability to, when meeting the side yard setbacks is...
And I did approach Anthony Puchek, who's the neighbor on my, if you're looking at the house on my left, with the variant, with the, he's got, does not have an easement, I do have an easement with Teconic Innovations.
Right.
And he, I provided your contact information, so that his...
His attorney called me last week.
Oh, good, okay, so, you know, I told him, I said, "Listen, Anthony, you know, the driveway's there, it's, I have no problem with it, you're maintaining it, it's fine, you'd be wise to..."
But doesn't he have two driveways?
He does, it's a horseshoe.
Okay, so I wasn't sure if he went in on one and came out the other, or...
It's very convenient, it's a two-family house, and, you know, they've got the horseshoe with the big parking lot and the four-car garage in the back, so it works out, it doesn't create a problem for us, like I said, we can't use that front yard.
Right. And by the way, I just mentioned that the front, the 78, the lot was 78 feet...
It's wider in front than in back.
Wide, but that's, you're right, that's the front.
Yes.
The back drops down to 65 feet.
It's tapered, right.
So if we take away the 50 feet for your two side yard setbacks, you're left with 15 feet, which is, you know, so that's why, again, you have a very, very unique situation on your lot here that we don't very, we don't see on many other lots.
It's, you know, it's, it's a, we have a bunch of residents sandwiched inside of a commercial, you know, community, and I don't know how you can, because we don't want to leave, you know, we like it, you know, we actually like it, believe it or not, and we just want to be able to enjoy it.
All right, so I think we've now raised all the issues that we reviewed last time around, are there any other comments or questions from board members?
I'm good.
All right, so that being said, is there anyone here to speak for or against the appeal from Adam Gentile, 874 Route 376, requesting an eight-foot sideline variance for a proposed 16-foot by 36-foot in-ground pool, a two-foot sideline variance for a proposed pool patio, a 23-foot sideline variance for a pre-existing garage for which a building permit and certificate of completion have been issued, and an expansion of a non-conforming use. Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And by the way, we do know for the record that Mary Seminera is here. Resolution, or, oh, this one, we're gonna close...
I have it, so...
You have one?
Yeah. Where'd it go? Just got here. You ready? Okay. Appeal number 3676, Adam Gentile, eight-foot sideline variance for a proposed 16-by-36-foot in-ground pool, and a two-foot sideline variance for a proposed pool patio, and a 23-foot sideline variance for a pre-existing garage at 874 Route 376 in Wappingers, resolution offered by zoning board member Mary Seminera, whereas the applicant has applied to the zoning board for an eight-foot sideline variance for a proposed 16-by-36-foot in-ground pool, a two-foot sideline variance for a proposed pool patio, a 23-foot sideline variance for a pre-existing garage for which a building permit and a, I'm sorry, certificate of...
Completion.
Completion have been issued, and an expansion of a non-conforming use pursuant to sections 194-95, 194-93, and 194-123 of the zoning ordinance, whereas this is an action, this action is a type-two action under SEACR, and no further action is required, and whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Duchess News on May 28, 2014, and whereas the zoning board of appeals had held a public hearing on June 10, 2014, and whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that, the granting of the variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the community, the desired result cannot be achieved by some other means, the variance other means, the variance requested is not substantial, the proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood. Now therefore, be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request made by Adam Gentile, 873 Route 376, Wappingers Falls, for an eight-foot sideline variance for a proposed 16-by-36-foot in-ground pool, a two-foot sideline variance for a proposed pool patio, a 23-foot sideline variance for a pre-existing garage, for which the building permit and certificate of
Compliance.
compliance have, have been issued, and an expansion for non-conforming use pursuant to sections 194-95, 194-93, and 194-123 of the zoning ordinance. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk, and a copy sent to the applicant slash owner.
Is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And myself, aye. All right, you're all set.
Thank you all, have a good evening.
You too. All right, item number five, appeal 3677, Cornet, Wade and Gretchen Cornet, 25 Elk Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 12-foot sideline variance for a proposed 21-foot by 6-foot two-story addition, 21-foot sideline variance, and 47-foot rear line variance for an existing 12-foot by 16-foot shed, and a 4-foot sideline variance for an existing patio pursuant to section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening.
Do I have a motion to open the public hearing? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so, we've discussed this before, um, and one of the things that came up at our last meeting was the patio, which, so you measured that and appropriately got back to Pam with the information, so we do actually need a 4-foot variance for the patio on the side of the house that he mentioned. So, you have an existing accessory apartment within your home, what you're looking to do is try to, um, we had talked previously about putting outside access to create an access to the second floor, but instead you've determined it makes more sense to enclose it, it's going to look a lot nicer
Absolutely.
being enclosed, finished with the same materials that already are, are within your house.
Yes.
We did talk about that, um, this is in Worley Homes.
It is.
So, the lots are very, very small, this is a corner lot, so you have to deal, you know, that's one of the restrictions that you have to deal with here. But again, for safety purposes, it's, it's better to have the alternate egress or a set of second, second egress on this side of, of the home is what you were looking for. Anything I missed?
No, I think that covers it.
Okay, any comments or questions from board members?
I'm good.
Is there anyone here to speak for or against? Wade and Gretchen Cornet, 25 Elk Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting a 12-foot sideline variance for a proposed 21-foot by 6-foot two-story addition, 21-foot sideline variance, and 47-foot rear line variance for an existing 12-foot by 16-foot shed, and a 14-foot, I'm sorry, a 4-foot sideline variance for an existing patio. Seeing none, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is appeal number 3677, applicant is Wade and Gretchen Cornet, requesting a 12-foot sideline variance for a proposed 21 feet by 6 feet, two-story addition, 21 feet sideline variance, and a 47-foot rear line variance for an existing 12 feet by 16 feet, feet, uh, shed, and a 4-foot sideline variance for an existing patio. Resolution offered by zoning board member Aziz Anson, whereas the applicant has applied for the zoning board for a 12-foot sideline variance for a proposed 21-foot by 6-foot two-story addition, 21 feet sideline variance, and a 47-foot rear line variance for an existing 12-foot by 16-feet shed, and a 4-feet sideline variance for an existing patio pursuant to section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance, whereas this action is a type-two action under Seeker, and no further action is required, and whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern Duchess News on May 28, 2014, and whereas the zoning board of appeal held a public hearing on June 10, 2014, and whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variance would not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or be a detriment to the community, as the addition will be finished in the same material as the house, the shed is existing and fits with the character of the property, and the patio is existing?
Yeah, it's a pathway, it's a, to get that back.
The existing, the desired result cannot be achieved by some other means, as this is a corner lot as well as an undersized lot, the variance requested is not substantial, the proposed area variance would not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood. Now therefore, be it resolved that the zoning board of appeal hereby approves the request made by Wade and Gretchen Cornet, 25 Elk Road, Hopewell Junction, for a 12-feet sideline variance for a proposed 21-foot by 6-foot two-story addition, 21-foot sideline various, sideline, and 47-feet rear line for an existing 12-feet by 16-feet shed, and a 4-foot sideline variance for an existing patio pursuant to section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk, and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Is there a second?
Second.
Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Tara? Mary?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Your motion carries.
Thank you so much, have a good evening.
You too. Now, I feel better about me tripping up on saying all those things, right?
I know, it's just
It's a lot to read sometimes. All right, this is going to be a unique one next, folks, so we're going to, we're looking for some assistance on. Number six, appeal 3678, Bozelay, William Bozelay, owner of Ivy Hall Estate, Bikenhall House, 21 Bikenhall Road, Hopewell Junction, requesting an interpretation of section 194-64 historic structures. Hi. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, last month, we had an entertaining discussion
Yes.
with, with your father, um, about the history and the, you know, use of the historic home, the historic structure of this address, that's been used as a bed and breakfast, and the fact that 20-some-odd years ago, it went to the planning board and got approval to operate as a bed and breakfast, and the town code does have a provision for the use of a historic structure that allows it to be used as a bed and breakfast, but based on, um, the use of the structure itself, because you're, you actually are operating with five rooms when you're at full occupancy, five bedrooms.
Six, six guest rooms now.
Oh, six guest rooms.
As of just last year. Well, first of all, I'm Mary Griffin, by the way, and I'm Bill Bozelay's daughter,
Right.
my Bo, um, and Florence Bozelay's daughter, and, um, I'm, been given permission to speak on behalf of my dad, and the reason that's happened is that my father's 84, my mom's 85, and my mother is bedridden, uh, my father is her primary caretaker, so he does have help during the day, but in the evenings, um, he's her primary caretaker, so that's where he is tonight, that's why he's not here with us tonight.
And, and he had, did have some of his own issues as well in terms of needing medication?
Exactly, exactly.
We went a little late last time for him when needing some help.
Thank you, thank you. So, yes, in 1990, um, my mom took, um, they decided, well, they, first of all, they bought the house in 1972, they've been living there for 42 years, and they'd like to live there for the rest of their lives. So, in about, um, the six kids came in in 1972, 1990, when it became an empty nest, my mother opened a small business and started the, um, historic home as a bed and breakfast, and at, originally had opened it with only three rooms. Over time, um, they added the fourth and the fifth room, not physically added to the house
Right.
but they just fixed up rooms and, and added, um, started renting those guest rooms. It was only last year that they actually added the last room. So, there's a, a section of the house that they live in, and there's six actual guest rooms that are rented as a bed and breakfast.
All right, but you're here this evening because your dad has asked for an interpretation of the historic structure and its, his ability to be able to use the structure in such a manner as a bed and breakfast with as many rooms, um, and I guess we need to get to the use of the accessory apartment
Correct.
of the garage, which has been used since it was built in the, probably in the 1980s, right, 1985 or so?
That was built, no, that was actually built in 2004
Oh, oh, maybe the garage, okay.
So, it's, yeah, it's not a historic structure, it was built
Right.
in 2004 as a garage to help maintain the rest of the historic structures.
Okay.
But there is an accessory unit on top, it was only used for family members, and he'd like to use that as a rental income, so.
So, let's, let's have, you've asked for an interpretation related to historic structures, so for the, we, we had a discussion last week, but for the purpose of getting
Okay.
comment from town residents, we, we would like to get any input that anybody would like to offer. And the section that we're specifically looking at is uses permitted by special permit, and the one that we're looking at specifically is to residential or professional uses, provided that they are appropriate to the structure, compatible with the neighborhood, and are located on a state or county road that can be, that can accommodate increased traffic. The uses may include the following, A, sit-down restaurants not to exceed an average seating capacity of 50 unless the preservation of the structure necessitates a larger size, B, bed and breakfast not to exceed 12 rooms, C, professional offices not to exceed six employees, D, multifamily residential use not to exceed four units. Um, and so, we talked about the fact that this, your, this property actually borders the Taconic Park, the Taconic Parkway, so we have a state road there, even though, you know, I guess previously there was a driveway there that wasn't necessarily really being, servicing the property, but, um, or it's not being used now, at least.
No.
Yeah, so, but that met the condition related to the, um, state road. We talked about the fact that the planning board had reviewed this back in 1990, they did allow the use of three bedrooms for a bed and breakfast, so it sounds like the number has increased since then. Um, and so, it says a bed and breakfast not to exceed 12 rooms, and we talked about the fact that this structure is actually 14 rooms. So, I think our discussion last week was leading us to the fact that it was, the code, the way it's written is a little ambiguous, but it probably is saying that the bed and breakfast would not exceed, not 12 rooms in the structure, but 12 rooms for residential overnight stay use.
Yes, yes.
Okay, but what concerned us was the fact that this doesn't say and, it doesn't say or, it just lists A, B, C, and D. And so, one of the, the issues that, that comes up is how do we deal with the fact that there's now a garage on the property with an accessory apartment, and the garage itself is not a historic structure? And so, I think that's what we, it doesn't even, it's not even going to fall under the interpretation here. I don't think
I don't know how much time you're allowed to say with your interpretations.
Okay.
We can always listen to your opinion.
No, that's what, great, we could, yeah, your opinion is certainly important, so, and I don't think you were able to be here last month, so that's why we didn't, we weren't able to in, have you, include you in the discussion that we had, so that, so we all agreed there was no and/or, or and/or, you know, in terms of the interpretation, so it, it appeared to us at the time that multiple uses could be allowed. So, but again, I don't think this interpretation that's being asked for is going to deal with the accessory apartment in the garage. I think that's, I think we have to deal with that as a separate issue. Comments from board members?
Do you know that there's other structures that have residential units in them as well?
On this property? Oh, okay, no?
There's, um
There's four historic structures. There's a barn, um, what they called a poultry house
Okay.
and a carriage house.
Okay.
So, there's
Do any of these buildings have residential use?
All three of those buildings have residential use. They're rental properties.
Okay.
When you say rental properties, are they bed and breakfast guest rooms or multi-family living?
Is it, yeah, multifamily residential use, not exceed four units?
They're multifamily residential use, so they have one, kitchens, bathrooms.
And how many residential units are in each of those other structures?
In the, what they call the poultry house is one.
Okay.
And the carriage house is two.
Okay.
And in the barn is five.
That's not, that's not allowed, yeah. All right, it sounds like all sorts of units have been added to this.
Well, okay, then the other question is, obviously, these had to be converted, right? So, were permits and stuff obtained, or were they were just done?
They predated zoning, they were built in 1970 and 1980.
The residential uses, the apartments predated zoning?
No.
No, this is since 1990.
They're saying that the structure itself was built in 1970.
I know.
Right, understood, understood.
But the poultry house, you had to put bathrooms
All right, so, again, dealing with the interpretation, I think one of the issues we have to deal with is, is it A, or B, or C, or D, or is it potentially and, it can be a restaurant and a bed and breakfast with 12 bedrooms and multifamily use and professional office?
No.
And six
I wouldn't say, my opinion would be not an and. First of all, they're not talking about properties, they're talking about structures.
Uh-huh.
So, you may have a structure that can have up to 12 rooms, I don't, I don't think they're going to say and, 12 rooms for a bed and breakfast plus
Well, you might also have a restaurant, you might have a restaurant
Yeah, you might have a restaurant.
in the, in the
Well
building that's being used as a bed and breakfast.
I agree, yeah.
I think that was part of why we said
Yeah.
Well, but again, my point is that you're talking about each structure, you have three different structures on it, so I'm not sure
Well, each, no, but each structure would have to meet the code, even meet our interpretation.
Yes.
So
But that's what I'm saying, we don't even have to consider whether there's a mixed use here right now, do we?
Not related to what we're hearing now?
No.
Well, I, maybe I don't understand what the interpretation is that we're being asked to do.
The original reason we were being, my understanding is, the original reason we were being asked for the interpretation dealt with the fact that there was a garage with, that was built after all the other properties is not historic that has an accessory apart, or has a, a, a rooms above it that you'd like to convert to an accessory apartment.
Correct.
Um, but that's not a historic structure.
So, we don't have to consider that, that doesn't apply to this.
Right.
That's my comment.
Doesn't make the threshold
Right.
The historic structure.
Well, it's proper use on the property as a whole is a different issue.
Right. But we now are hearing, though, that they do have a, one of the historic structures has multifamily residential use that exceeds the four units. All right, so
That is correct.
That, and that's why I asked a question about how those conversions were done, because somebody may come back, that may be an important issue if that comes back, it's not before us right now.
But you might, there might be a structure large enough that, where a bed and breakfast could be operating, you might have an office in there.
I understand that.
So, that goes back to the interpretation
But we're not
that we're, that's what we're being, we're being asked for an interpretation, so we got to respond to the request before us.
Yeah, but we're asking for an interpretation on whether it applies to the garage. I don't think we go beyond what we're seeking
That's not
to do. Again, what's
That was
We're asking for an interpretation of the whole statute?
No, I think there's two things, and I, and I think one of them is the garage unit, and the other one is the, uh, bed and breakfast not to exceed 12 rooms, and I think there's a question about the rooms state, whether that's actually guest rooms or rooms in the structure. I think that's where the interpretation comes in on those two points.
Well, again, I don't think we have to go beyond the
The scope of what's being requested.
Requested, and what's being requested is simply
Is
straight what the statute says, they're not asking for a mixture right now. They have the guest rooms, bed and breakfast is in one structure, residential units is in another structure, so, I don't think we have to say, since they're different structures, we're not considering whether there's and/or right now. Why don't we just say that you can't have more than four, just as the statute says?
Understood, but we are being requested to give an interpretation, and so, we have to finish this out. We've got, related to, it doesn't, whether, what it's specifically related to, I'm not sure that that's necessarily relevant at this point. What's, do we agree that A stands by itself and you choose one of the four, or B stands by itself, or, or we agreeing that all four of these is allowed?
I guess the problem I'm having is being, like, trained as a lawyer, if you go in front of, and you look at the facts that are before you, you don't make a decision greater than the facts that are presented. That specific question is not being asked of us. You don't just go to somebody saying
Look at your application, you're asking for an interpretation of the code, of the specific, for no, that's, they're not saying for any particular reason.
But it has to be set within a certain fact pattern. They're not giving a fact pattern, everybody can just come in and say, "Okay, we want to interpret this statute, we want you to interpret that statute," and we go on forever, interpretate, interpreting all the statutes in the town code? No. I think we limit our question to the facts that are presented, and the facts presented are, were different structures, we don't have to go any further than that. I don't think we give an interpretation on facts that are not actually presented, we have to give an interpretation as to whether the fact presented are consistent with the code or not.
In any of the other historic structures on the property that also have the multifamily uses, are there other uses within those structures?
No.
No, they're just strictly the apartments?
Correct.
Okay, based on what you're hearing tonight, are you thinking you need to continue with this request for an interpretation? Because it's not going to solve the issue related to the garage.
No, but it makes me, I mean, that's all we needed, we needed an interpret, your interpretation, and, um, so if, that's all, so we will continue, I guess we will, we need to know what our next step would be, if we wanted to, I guess we'd have to go to the planning board, or we'd go to, what would that new structure fall under?
What new structure, oh, the garage.
The garage. The garage.
I need a variance to allow...
But that's not what's being requested here.
No, not, not yet. But that would be our next step.
Yeah, probably.
But first, we just wanted to understand what, since we are in, under the National Register of Historic Places, we fall under this his, uh, section of historic structure. So that's why we knew we fall, and we just wanted to make sure. Well, we, we, now we know we have a problem. Because following this, we have a historic structure that has five units in it.
Yep.
So we're going to have to evict one of our tenants potentially, is what, is what I'm hearing. So, I mean, that's something that we're going to have to, we're going to have to figure out what we're going to do about that.
And it's on the record, you know, as a side thing, you know, if you did come in on a variance and that still existed, we couldn't consider a variance knowing that there was a violation on the property.
Correct. Oh.
So you wouldn't go anywhere on your request for a variance.
And you know the planning board would go anywhere.
Okay?
Okay.
So...
So, that's an interpretation.
All right, so, so again, based on your original, your, your father's original request, I think that was trying to understand whether the garage apartment could be kept. I think, from what I'm seeing, and we'll still get to public comment on this because we're looking for input, but I think I'm, I'm, the way I'm reading it, and I think what the board members are saying is, this code relates to each historic structure and not to a property as being historic.
Okay.
All right? Each of your multiple structures on this property meet the guidelines for historic structures. And so the good news is it's not limiting your entire site to only five residential apartments. It's, it's each structure would, if we agree that that's the, ultimately, the interpretation that we, that we decide here. So the fact that you still will have other issues that we'll have to, or your father will have to, has other issues we'll have to deal with, or some board will have to deal with, we'll get to that.
And again, the, yeah, and section where it clearly says historic structures under one ninety-four dash, one ninety-four dash sixty-four, and then applicability section says this section shall apply to any structure.
Right.
So when you talk about structures, historic structures, and then any structure, then it becomes singular, which means that it applies to, you know, specific structures, so that each structure has to comply with these other requirements. So the bed and breakfast not to exceed twelve rooms, you know, I think that that's an issue that you'll have to address. And then multi-family residential issue not to exceed four units, you need to address for each of the structures.
Yeah, to the extent that we're saying structure stands on its own, I guess we're giving an interpretation of the statute to that extent.
Because this, yeah, I mean, if I'm, it's, are you reading applicability?
Yes.
The section shall apply to any structure within town of East Fishkill that is listed on the national, so our, is our property is listed on the National Register of Historic Places.
Your property's not a structure, it's a structure that is listed.
And or...
Right, you just said before that multiple structures on your property were listed.
Yes.
Is the entire property listed, or is just multiple structures have their own listings?
I think it's the entire property.
What's, did you...
It's six acres.
Then how could you have built the garage?
I think historic structure is just building itself.
Right.
Yeah.
All right, we have another interpretation.
Okay.
Every property is historic, right? Every property is historic.
Oh, okay.
Well, I guess you could have an historic property in the sense that maybe you have a revolutionary grave or something.
What is included in the survey? Is this included?
Yeah, but, but the, the headstones require placement on the ground. That's a structure.
We're looking at another and/or question.
You're not going to put a bed and breakfast in it?
Just saying.
We're looking at another and/or question that's presented in one ninety-four to sixty-four applicability.
Yes.
And says that it's listed on the National Register, or that is included in the historic structure survey dated June of eighty-four. So Pam's going out to check to see if this is also listed on the historic structure survey of eighty-four.
It's still a structure, though.
I know, I know. But we think that might...
The garage definitely is not a historic structure.
Right.
My Pam, look on that, do you want that comment from the...
Yeah, is, is there anybody out there that wants to help us with this?
I see a person in the back.
The board is looking...
You're raising your hand, you have a comment?
...for interpretation of his, the historic structure code to see if, to assist with how, or what potential uses of these historic structures should be allowed.
So you'll have to come to the mic, please.
And there's, there's, there's not necessarily any right or wrong answer here, it's just, we're just looking for guidance.
Well, I just had a question.
Sure.
No, I wanted to know why she is asking for an interpretation of the historical structure. Like, is it for tax purposes? What, what is the reasoning behind it?
Again, our understanding initially was that there is a residential use above a garage that was being used by family members, that what they'd like to do is make that a permanent rental apartment.
Right.
But that apartment, or that rental space is not in the structure that's on the National Register, it's in a newer garage.
Right, right.
So we're just getting, you know...
I think there was a second item, too, because...
Yeah, my, my name is Frankie Mayo, and I...
There's a clipboard on the side, can we use, ask you to print your name when you sign in?
I think the second reason, too, was they were approved for three guest rooms, and they wanted five, so we had to interpret what they had five.
Well, they've already, they've already changed it five, to create five. Yes, that, that is true, we did talk...
But that's not the twelve rooms.
Tara needs to use her...
Can we move over something?
Yeah, that they were approved for three bedrooms, but they wanted, or are using five, so we needed to interpret whether bed and breakfast referred to rooms as a whole or guest rooms.
Rooms or bedrooms.
Guest rooms.
Yeah.
And it's actually up to six now.
Up to six now. But again, they have planning board approval for three, which is another issue. Is there anyone else here that'd like, would I, to offer any comment on this? You can see our dilemma. No?
Does the planning board have to approve each room, even though the statute says you can go up to twelve rooms?
I think they approved it for, yeah, required site plan approval, that was it's...
That's why I was being interested, see what was allowed, and the structures and what they had built, if they had bathrooms and stuff, or if they had chickens.
Yes, is it in there? The entire property, or just the...
The relevance, we have to...
The house and the barns. Resources within the property, house and two barns, are historic structures. You said there was a...
There's a carriage house.
A carriage house, a barn, and a poultry?
Well, I'm, yeah, poultry barn.
Oh, poultry barn.
Yeah, it was for chickens.
How big is this?
How big?
Yeah, I think if a chicken, usually you don't think of it as a barn, but it could be fairly big.
It is fairly big.
A five-story or was it two-story?
It's one-story.
Long?
Long.
You have one unit in that?
It's one, only one unit.
So you refer to the three buildings as the carriage building, the poultry building, and the barn building?
No, and the historic house, the poultry building, and the barn, as three historic structures. My understanding is the carriage house was also built at the same time, in eighteen forty-one. I do not know why that was not considered a historic structure.
The other ones were built in nineteen twenty.
This is nineteen, I'm sorry, eighteen forty-one.
Eighteen?
Eighteen forty-one.
The assessor has, not exactly accurate, the assessor had three of the structures built in nineteen twenty and one built in nineteen thirty.
Eighteen forty-one. The house and barn and poultry and carriage house.
Built in eighteen forty-one and on its original site, this is one of the most intact and elaborate examples of a building type common in East Fishkill. A two-and-a-half-story, five-by-three bay, Greek Revival period farmhouse with wings. Level with the road, the house fronts a large lawn with a brick wall of, at roadside. To the north, a large barn, which has an addition and has been made into apartments, okay, has the heavy frame and the central eaves, front entry typical of early Yankee barns. A smaller barn may have been a blacksmith shop.
Right, that's what it said.
A guest house has also been added to the west portion of the property near the pool. What's the guest house?
That's, I guess that, they're calling, what I call the poultry house is, was the guest house.
Okay, so that's not historic.
What, what's the, just curiosity, what's the date on this?
The survey was June of eighty-four.
Thank you.
I was just curious about, oh, this predated the, it's all done.
It predates the garage, so, but it was listed, the house was listed on the National Register December thirtieth, nineteen ninety-one. So this is beyond nineteen eighty-four.
Yeah, I'm just curious as to when all the conversions were done.
All right, so it sounds like you're going to have an issue on the house as well, the carriage house, or the poultry barn, whichever, whichever one is not historic.
It's not considered historic. So the definition of the historic structures on their property is what is in that survey? Is that what you're saying, what you're reading from right now?
The code says either it has to be on the National Register, or it has to be in the town survey.
And that's what you're reading from right now?
Yes.
So I need to find the National Register of Historic Places, that register, to see how they designated it in nineteen ninety-one.
Aren't they still pre-existing, I don't know, in the block that's around there?
Probably, but we don't know when it was converted into an apartment.
It sounds like quite a while ago.
Do you know when the poultry barn was converted into, into the apartment?
No.
Was it?
Oh, well, it was after nineteen ninety-one.
Okay, then, that's an issue, then. All right. So, so again, it looks like the house and two of the barns would meet the code requirements. I still think you're going to have to resolve with, and with you, with, who does she, who helps her take a look at this property to see where we go from here?
They have pictures, if you ever, Pam, I guess you could, she could look at this if she came to see you, so, to see what structures they're talking about.
Mary, is this something the building department would do? I wouldn't think so.
It's like, if I can see what predated what they did without, what's still needs to be...
Okay. All right, but I think that, but do you agree that that would be outside of our interpretation? Okay. So what actually has to happen with this property to get it to be conforming is a separate issue from the interpretation. Okay.
Thank you.
There's nothing to get, something, okay, one more page. Where's the other houses?
This is the carriage house, and this is the barn.
So are those...
And they don't show picture of the poultry house. Right, there's no other structure.
No, I don't think that's, I don't think that's historic. You were saying that was a pool house. So if it was built with a pool, probably didn't do that in the eighteen forties.
No, 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 it was built in eighteen forty. That's what it was built in.
The poultry barn?
Yeah.
Oh.
All four structures, my understanding, all four structures were built in eighteen forty-one. Those four structures.
They're saying the guest house...
I mean, we used it as, when we were kids, as we called it the pool house, but it had been a meeting house, it had been a hunting lodge. In nineteen twenty-nine, Vicnell used it as a hunting lodge.
Okay.
Maybe they didn't realize that. They're calling it a, a guest house that was added on, next to the pool.
Yeah, it's not a guest house.
They may not have understood that.
And what's the blacksmith building?
That's, that was one interpretation, that might have been a blacksmith. I had heard it was a dairy barn, because it was actually, there's a cement structure that used to be a farm, a milk house, which is no longer there, but there's remains of a structure there. And they had, it, it was a, it had, it was like a me, I thought of it as a meeting house. It had two, where people would put on shows and plays and things like that, a playhouse, or they have a meeting house. But originally, in, it was used as a poultry house for chickens.
But you have, you had multiple names for one building.
Yes, this is correct. Historically, it was called the poultry house, and from eighteen forty-one. That's my underst, that's my understanding, but...
All right.
It's a little tough to fault.
Well, it was a farm, I'm sorry, it was, it was a farm, and then many things have happened to it since eighteen forty-one. And my parents, since, for the last forty years, have just continued to try to maintain and preserve this historic property.
Right. And one, to your father's credit, one of the things that he made very clear to us that, that this property by itself is not self-sustaining. It's very expensive to maintain a historic property, I think that's a given, and so...
And he's retired.
Right, that's true. He was supplementing it with his other work income.
Income which he no longer has.
Which he doesn't have anymore, and so he is looking to have the board think as broadly as possible, not just for his structure, but for others, so that historic properties can remain economically viable.
Right. And they can live there for the rest of their lives.
So that needs to be part of our, what process as we, as we, you know, determine a decision here.
But I think the issue before us is that we consider each structure separately, for each of the considerations, and that the garage is not a historic structure, so it's not part of our consideration on the, your question.
And so we can clarify guest rooms, and now do we, again, the last question, I just need to make sure we have good clearance on before we write up the decision here, is whether it's, again, multiple uses were anticipated within the same structure.
I don't think, again, I don't think that question's before us, so I wouldn't answer that on these facts.
Okay.
I don't know whether, I don't know whether John has an opinion on that, because he's just a structure.
How about it being, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
How about it being limited to four units?
Well, that's plain, it is.
That's, that's...
The question I would have on that...
That's a statement of fact.
Yeah, and that's just, there's no interpretation, there are four units, there's four units, except that.
Okay.
The only caveat that I would have to say in that, before you go out and do anything, is, when were they done? I mean, if they were done before zoning or something, I don't know when these apartments were put in there, that's what I was asking, were permits obtained and stuff? Back in, apparently when they considered these in nineteen eighty-four, whatever, they were already there. So if they were done before zoning, you may have a pre-existing non-conforming use that would keep going on. So I'm not saying necessarily you need to run out and kick somebody out. You need to do some research and find out what was done, I think.
Okay.
You know, I don't think that, one of the things that you have to do is to have, I guess, identify each of the structure clearly, because you call it one name, the historic register calls it a different name.
Should we sketch out these numbers in the buildings?
Yeah.
Site one, that's why I pointed out the picture, you can find out which ones are considered based on the picture that are in the book.
But there's...
Correct.
Some regardless of what it's called.
Yeah, consistent, consistency in the language for each of these structures.
Or telling us all the language for a given structure.
Exactly right.
Or just use the language that's in the book with the picture.
Yeah, we add multiple names for a given structure.
So I don't think we are ready to make the interpretation, I think if you want to come back next round, we can do it.
Well, I think we can close the public hearing, and we'll make a decision, we'll, we'll write up something formal, based on our discussion this evening. All right? So do I have a motion to close and reserve?
Well, again, I don't know if the public is ready, because I don't think we really, we are not even unsure ourselves on this whole thing, so I don't, I think, I'd rather see...
We can limit the decision, that's the bottom line, is we can only cover the things that are appropriate.
I think we'll limit the decision if the facts are there.
Right.
And each of these structures are, will be considered separate, I think that's the question before, it's really based on this interpretation.
Right.
They have three structures. Okay? And each structure can be considered separately, is our interpretation.
I think you know...
The second interpretation...
You can almost list the structures, but you're finding three structures.
Yeah, but we can go by the book, I think, with the pictures, yeah.
Okay, so in, three or four structures?
There's three in the...
Three. They either have to be on the register, or they have to be in the survey, so there's three structures.
Okay.
The others, that's, that's why I'm saying, you need to sit down with somebody, and I'm still trying to figure out who that is, to figure out, what do you do, who's going to take a look at the whole property?
We would have to look at the violations of our building permit.
Okay.
But to get that other thing on the historic, I just don't have any knowledge, I mean, I don't know.
We might have to look at that, too. It makes sense, not a fourth structure listed.
Or the, the historic survey of 84.
Pam, can I have her get in touch with you?
Yeah.
And then you and I can talk tomorrow about maybe how do we proceed from here. So, I, I don't want to have you go, not knowing what you're doing to get to the, to the bottom line here, so.
Do you have a survey showing all the buildings?
Do you have a survey of the property that shows where they all are?
I don't know. I can find out, I mean, I can.
How many acres is the entire property?
Six, almost six, 5.77.
Because that would be.
All right. So do I have a motion to close and reserve on the interpretation?
Is anybody from the public?
I have already asked.
Okay.
Is there anyone else that wants to offer comments on this? Okay, do I have a motion to close and reserve?
Somewhere.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, we're going to need.
Close and reserve decision.
So, so what we'll do is, we'll write it up, probably at our next meeting, we'll, I think, issue a decision. Okay?
You can be here if you want.
But in the meantime, give, hold, give Pam like a week, and then touch base with her. All right, give Pam the call.
Did you get his math of the, okay, all right.
The applicant.
Thank you, thank you very much.
No problem.
This is a 62-day clock that starts night for our decision. And if we pass the 62, we'd ask for an extension with you.
Right.
There's a 62-day clock, I wanted to understand your portion. This, we close tonight the public hearing.
Yes.
And we reserve decision.
Okay.
So there's a 62-day clock that runs for the town, ZBA to make a decision. And if we make within time, fine. If we need 64 days, we have to ask you for an extension.
But actually getting to July is, because July is the 12th, we're probably right on 62 days, so.
We have it ready for next time.
Yep. We'll do our best.
Okay. No, thank you, thank you.
All right, that's, we're done for the public hearings, so now we're, are we going to be called? Oh, um, no, we said at the end. So now we're on to reviews. So we have item number seven, Appeal 3674 Lockwood, Gregory Lockwood, 329 Stormville Mountain Road, Stormville, requesting a variance to build a 24-foot by 26-foot detached garage in front of the front line of the dwelling pursuant to Section 194-107C of the zoning ordinance. Good evening, how are you? Good. All right, I did have an opportunity, I met Mr. Lockwood out on his property the other evening. If you'll remember, when we looked at this last month, there was some confusion about where his property line was versus where the edge of pavement was, and the fact that he was proposing the structure, I think at that point, last, last month, they were telling us it was going to be like seven feet back, as opposed to, I think, you know, might not quite be that far into the.
Yes.
Along the side of your, of your house. There, I think there's a couple things that, you know, as we were out there, that we talked about were important to mention. Number one, Mr. Lockwood has no garage.
Yes.
All right, that's, usually when we're seeing requests for garage, it's because folks want an additional garage. In this case, he has no garage at all, okay?
Correct.
So I think that's first, one thing for us to consider. I think you said you've been in this house for a couple of years now.
About 10 years.
But it was vacant for a couple of years before that.
For three years, yes.
And during the time that it was, we think that it was vacant, the town put a drainage line in, and a, and a pipe, and a easement in along the side of you, actually along your property, along the side. And so this, the, when you go past his paved driveway area, and the, the topography of the site drops off a couple of feet.
About three or four feet.
Yeah, drops off, at least, the top drops off, you know, pretty, pretty much, but then the, back there was so spongy.
It's wet.
It was very wet. And so his ability to push this garage back, not only just because of the topography and having to bring in fill and everything, but it's just with the drain, you know, with the drainage easement, it's a lower elevation than I-84, which is directly behind him. It's a wet, pretty wet site in the backyard there. Your whole left side of your yard is your septic.
Septic, my fields, my tent.
And again, you had a steep slope dropping off, it was probably even more than the three or four feet on the other side.
Oh, yes.
So, I kind of, as much as I tried seeing, in my mind, because he's got a circular driveway in the front of his house, I saw a garage maybe perhaps better suited as cattac cornered to the house, because I'm a little concerned if it's at a right angle to the house, how will somebody actually backs out, that I think that you actually would back into the house.
But we talked about pushing the garage back a little further towards the.
Well, pushing it back further isn't going to help, it's actually going to put the car closer to the house. So I think that's why, we, we actually measured it while we were out there, took out the measuring tape, and we figured that perhaps the, the, the place he's requesting, which is probably the best place, is about 42 feet from his property line. It's about 52 feet from the actually edge of pavement, okay? So accounting for the right-of-way, it's, it's actually about 42 feet. So he does need an eight-foot variance for that placement. We actually talked about that you could actually move it a little bit fur, that's what you were talking about.
Back, yeah, towards, towards the easement.
Move it back towards the side of the yard, as opposed to back toward I-84.
This way there's more room to pull out from the garage.
Right. That, that was how he proposed to address the issue of, and that, and he was going to put his wife in the bay closest to the street.
Exactly.
We'll leave that one alone.
Are you still?
So the doors would face the house, that's why you said move it to the sidewalk?
Um, yes. The doors would actually be facing the driveway, facing the house, right? So, so is this side is going to be a finished side of the garage? And there is a big, big tree here.
There's a big weeping willow, and, and then behind that, where the, where the drainage pipe is, there's all tree lines there, too.
Right.
You came and see the garage on the road.
True, I, I absolutely agree that if you're coming from this direction, you'll never see it. And there's, because there's this big, big weeping willow that will really block that well. Coming from this angle, you will see it, so.
This is the easement here?
Yes.
And it's wet. And it's wet in the back, this is where 84.
Yeah, because it, because there's, it's a lower elevation, and then I-84 is up a couple of feet in the back there. So it's, there was no question, he's limited where he can put it.
That's fine.
It, it was definitely helpful going out there and, and, you know.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Well, no, I appreciate you meeting me on Saturday night to do this, so. Crazy schedules, that's all. All right, so any questions or comments from board members?
Motion to advertise?
Okay, but again, we have to be clear on the advertising, we're going to have to make sure Pam knows that, that she's got to advertise for an eight-foot variance from the front yard setback. She's got to include that.
Okay.
All right, and you've got to get in. John, do you see the instructions sheet, sheet that Pam usually hands out? Is it in the front?
All right, let's see.
You have a seat to touch your back.
Uh, you don't want to hand that one out?
Yeah, no, I know there's, but this is one you can, we can ask, when the gentleman can wait two minutes, we'll give him a proper handout.
Yeah, if you could, if you don't mind, if you can wait a couple of minutes for Pam, for Pam to come back in. She's got to give you, ensure instructions about your sign.
Okay.
Okay?
And just make sure that the signs are properly posted with the magic, with the black prominent marker, so it doesn't rain.
It doesn't wash off.
Yeah, the rain doesn't wash it off. Okay.
But if you hang around for two minutes, she'll give it to you.
Okay. Do I have a second for the motion to advertise?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, for, okay. Item number eight, Appeal, nope, 3679, new single boiler list, the applicant has requested to be on the July agenda, so we're just going to move right past that. Item number nine, Appeal 3680 Barrett, Tara and Norm Barrett, 45 Maple W Drive, Hobell Junction, are requesting an expansion of a non-conforming use to install a double-wide mobile home where a single-wide had been located in Kessler Mobile Home Park off Route 82 pursuant to Section 194-123 of the zoning ordinance. Good evening. All right, we haven't seen your request at all, except for the paperwork that we've received, so if you don't mind, take us through what you're requesting and why.
Well, we're requesting, there's a lot, an empty lot, that was a 24 by 80, I believe, and we're requesting to put in a 28 by 65.
A 26, 8 by 64.
Well, this, yeah.
So right now it's empty.
It's empty right now.
How do you know it was there before?
Uh, the owner of the park.
There is actually site plan approval for this mobile home park that does show this as a designated space.
Okay, but this does designate the size, too?
Um, no.
It has unit A and unit B, is it approved for one unit, or is, or are you putting two units up there, because the application calls for unit A and unit B?
I don't know what that means. No, we're putting one unit in.
One unit. One home.
Okay, because the application says up here.
What was there before, again, I'm sorry?
Um, uh, 24 by 80, mobile home.
And you want a?
A, ours is, minus the slab, is 26, 8 by 64.
26 feet, 8 inches by 64?
So it's less than the 80.
Right.
Actually, maybe less square foot.
Yeah.
Yeah, 80's a pretty wide.
And we know the, we know the lot size.
What's the lot size?
The lot size is 58 feet from house to house, because there's a, there's a mobile home on each side of the empty lot. And it's 119 feet.
It's longer than 100, but we measured it out to 119, but we still had probably 20 more feet to go.
Okay.
Lengthwise, but it was, at that point.
You were well beyond what you needed anyway. Okay.
Which lot are you putting this trailer on?
I'm sorry?
Which lot?
Number 18.
Number 18.
Right.
Oh, it's a propos, okay, that's, okay, right here. Now, there is a proposed trailer for lot 16 also. Is that somebody else's?
That's.
I think that one's there now, I think according to it, there was a, there was another map that Pam had.
Number 16. There is a 16 there.
There is 16 there.
Okay, because it says proposed trailer up here. So you are, okay, so this is.
This was proposed for the site plan approval.
Okay.
All right, so like I said, there is site plan approval for this lot.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments from board members? What's the typical size of the other mobile homes in the park?
Most of them are what, like?
Between 14 and 16.
By like 70.
By 70 or 80.
Okay.
I'm not sure what we're. Couple of, oh, it was 24, I'm going to 26.
So you're going to have to pour the slab for the double-wide?
Right.
Right.
That's what we, we tried to get a building permit to do that, and they said that we needed to come in front of the board to see if we could put the 26, 8 by 64 house in this mobile home park.
All right, any comments?
No slab there or anything, that's what I'm wondering, was it just approved for 24 by 80?
No, you know what, the problem is, is the slabs weren't necessary until like 1998. So anything beyond that, the house is obviously older than that, so. No house.
24 is still pretty wide, like you say, most of them are 12 or 14.
14, or to 6, no, 12, 14 to 16.
Oh, still, yeah, those are the older ones. 24 is still, I think we consider double-wide.
So it's a third?
Well, it was.
Well, maybe 50, 50 percent larger.
The house is from November of 2000, and it was removed in 2009. The house that was actually on lot number 18.
So it was like 90. That's what I'm saying, I would consider a 24 a double-wide already.
Oh, would it be?
Wouldn't it? I mean, because like you say, the other ones.
What was there was 24?
24 by 80.
Oh, that's the slab, is that?
No, that's the house size.
Yeah, there is no slab.
And there is no slab there because the other one predated the need for slabs.
Right.
Okay. It's not that far off, so.
Yeah, I mean, we're talking two feet, 8 inches.
Right.
But it's a lot shorter, so, I mean.
That's the pleasure of the board.
I'm not seeing anything that creates any issues for me, it's basically the same thing.
Okay.
I'm okay.
Motion to advertise?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. All right, if you don't mind, see Pam, and she'll give you instructions, because you have to post a sign, and then we'll see you again next month.
Okay.
Okay? For a public hearing. All right. Item number 10, Appeal 3681, Antonio, Jose and Maria Antonio, 15 Flatler Road, Hobell Junction, requesting a 47-foot rear line variance for an existing 12'3 by 12'3 shed pursuant to Section 194-107 of the zoning ordinance. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Steve Whelan, I'm the architect, representing the Antonios, they're currently out of the country right now.
Oh, okay, all right. All right, so again, first time we're seeing their request, if you don't mind just taking us through, why can't the shed be moved, what's it used for, you know, things like that?
Absolutely, yeah. Turbigo, right now, it's just used as, as a storage shed. It's approximately 12'3 by 12'3. It's on the northeast side of the property. They're interested, the house was built probably in about 1980, and the shed not soon after that. They're interested in selling the house, not this year, but probably next year. So they'd like to leave the shed where it is. Their one, or the major problem that they have about moving it is directly in front of the shed, that's where their septic tank and leach fields are. If they were to comply with the 50-foot rear yard setback, if they were to move it closer to the house, it's going to be right directly behind the house. There might not even be room to put it there.
Don't they already have an existing shed immediately behind their house, actually attached to their house?
Yeah, they have the small, I think it's like 12 by 20, but that's.
11-foot by 18-foot shed, it's on, showing on their survey. So what's wrong with putting another shed right next to it?
Building a new one?
Oh, no, moving this one.
And why?
Why? You're saying that, you're saying they can't put it against the house, but they already have one against the house, why, that's why I'm just saying why they can't, they put this one right there as well.
The one that's directly against the house?
Yeah.
I mean, it's a lot, it's smaller, the roof height is a lot lower than this one, like this one here, I have pictures of what they had right now in the backyard, that's in 12'3 by 12'3.
Okay.
So they really couldn't put that up against the house.
Why, the other one's 11 feet.
By 18.
By 18 feet, right, it's not that far off.
Well, the owner's.
It's going to stick out a foot more.
The owner's a little concerned about moving it, though.
Okay.
Because it's been there for 25, 30 years.
Okay.
And he's thinking that once, if they try to move it, I mean, it's going to, I mean, it's been standing for 30 years, I mean, it's in pretty good shape.
Okay. The owner, we actually have an issue here, that the, that none of the sheds have permits.
Right, yeah, I'm currently going through and legalizing both of the, both the attached shed and the detached one.
This one, or is there a, we're wondering, there's a third structure that appears like near the driveway?
I'm just aware of just the two.
Trying to figure out what that structure is.
He may have, because he's got several, like, wood piles.
Steve, you want to come up here and we'll show you real quick?
Sure.
All right, so it's in the front, it's in the front of the front line of the house. Is it a boat, maybe, that's covered with a tarp? I don't know.
I'll have to look at some, because I took pictures when I was out there.
Yeah.
To see if that is still there.
Okay. This, now, the other concern that we have, while you're here, stay right here, hold on, because you got to see this as well. This is the setback line.
Right.
He's got stairs. Do you know what the stairs are made of?
Uh, they're concrete.
They're concrete, good answer. They're concrete, good answer. And then he's got a part of the house.
Right.
That, we were wondering whether he has a variance for that or not.
I don't know, I mean, I know the house was built like around 1980, so I don't know if that predates current zoning requirements.
Yeah, okay. All right, you're going to have to look in this as well?
Okay.
Because if we're going to, if we're going to deal with this, let's deal with everything all at one time?
Okay.
Okay? Yeah, it wasn't, that's.
It was all built at one.
So if it was built with the building permit for the house, one would think they would have got the variance right up front, but you don't usually, this board has historically not given variances with new construction. So that's why I'm asking the question. They might have, okay, so.
Because the survey's dated 1979, and if the house was built 79, 80.
So we're going to need this issue resolved. Yeah, I see that. So we might, again, just, let's just clean it all up and deal with it all at one time. What is this here?
That's like the bale doors going down to the basement.
All right, but so you see there is a shed right against the house. I don't know what's in this space here. Could be there's a sliding glass, or it could be there's a physical reason why they can't put the other shed up against, right next to the other one. But I understand what you're saying about the potential physical condition of the, this shed in the back and its ability to actually move, so.
They'd like to keep it only for, like, the resale of the house. Because otherwise, alternative, recycling would just, you know, take it down.
Right. Comments or questions? Huh?
Hard hit away.
Ooh, do they want to make the end?
Yeah, I'm, all right, so you're going to resolve the issue before we, well.
So there's no urgency for us to have a.
Yeah, there's no urgency for us to do a public hearing next month, right? Because there's, there's a lot of issues here. You've got sheds without permits, you've got, we've got to address the issue of the front part of the building, whatever this other structure is on the right side of the driveway. So can we have you come back again for one more review before we do a public hearing?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
So I'll do my research on that front bump out.
There's a lot of issues here, okay?
Now, can I, can I ask, like, are there predated zoning ordinances for the town of East Fishkill that go back to 1980?
Well, that's why we're, if you could tell us when the shed went up, that would be helpful, but.
They were saying like.
Oh, yeah, if the house went up. Yeah. There's your answer.
Okay, but as far as like the front of the house with that bump out, is there a zoning ordinance like from 1980 that I can take a look at to see? It hasn't changed? Okay.
So.
I think you might as well just go ahead and bring the variance, even if it already was.
Yeah, I don't think we're going to make you take it down.
They're going for a variance for the shed anyway, so.
Right.
But at least his clients will be here next time also.
I think so.
But let's resolve whether there's a third issue on the site, okay?
Okay.
And then we'll, then we'll get that, get it all cleaned up.
So there's the three issues. It's the shed, the bump out in the front, and whatever that is on the right-hand side of the property.
And again, if that one corner of the house also needs a one-foot variance, or whatever it is, we're going to need to know that.
Okay.
And the structure with a tarp or board or whatever.
Whatever that is.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm even, I'm just going to do a drive-by maybe tomorrow.
Yeah, because who knows how old this aerial is? The aerial could be, you know, three, four, five years old. I, but we got to address it since we're seeing it.
Okay.
All right, so we'll see you again next month.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. Um, I hate to do this to names, but item number 11, appeal 3682, Olescus, Olescuk?
Not even close.
Not even close, really? Sorry, please help me.
That's all right. Olischuk.
Olischuk.
Olischuk. Not as bad as it looks.
Olescuk. Okay. Richard Olescuk, 6 Severst Road, Hobell Junction, requesting a 13-foot sideline variance for a proposed in-ground pool pursuant to Section 194-95 of the zoning ordinance. Okay, so again, we haven't seen your requests yet. Can you take us through what, what you're asking for? Due to the layout of the pool, so.
Certainly.
What size pool are you looking for?
I'm looking for a 16 by 32-foot pool, and forgive me, I've never done anything like this before, so I don't know the protocol. I brought a couple extra sets of clear photographs.
That's fine, bring them up. That helps us. All right, so you have a corner lot.
I'll just read it.
You have a corner lot, that's going to be one of your issues.
Correct.
You also have conservation easements on your property.
Correct.
And so you've got buffers associated with those conservation easements.
That is correct as well.
Okay, can I ask you to come up here for one second, just so I can make sure we're understanding? Because we were looking at this and not understanding your line. Is this the conservation line, or is this the buffer line? See how it goes off the page? I can't, I don't know what it is.
From what I was told by DEC, this is the buffer. This is 100-foot to wet.
Okay, all right. Yeah, what's here in the front?
I don't know where it attaches to, but this is an area of.
Another buffer. Because it says the 100-foot adjacent area, so, so there's a conservation easement like over across the street.
And all that is, is a corner, little piece of corner of, uh, grass and shrubs.
You can't do anything on there, you know, you can't build on there.
No.
Okay, so first off, your lot starts with some issues related to conservation easement and the appropriate buffer areas.
When I moved in, I was told it's a very, very unique lot.
Okay, I agree.
She actually called it the most unique lot she's ever sold.
Okay. You're proposing a pool that looks like it's going to actually cross that buffer line.
Hopefully I didn't misrepresent it. I want to go right up to it.
Okay, are you planning a patio?
Yes.
All right.
But if on that end, if I can't on that end, if I can't on that end, actually.
Yeah, how are you going to put a pool in without a patio around it?
Actually, I thought that was the line right there. I was planning on a couple of feet.
And if it's, if it's this one, that's why I was asking, which is the line? This line, see, this points to this line.
Correct.
So it looks like you're right on it or encroaching it, but again, if you've got any kind of patio, even a two or three-foot patio, you're going to be over the buffer line.
You're going to have to get a survey anyways to tell you where to put it, right? On that side, if I have to redraw it, pull it a couple of feet back.
All right, but explain to us why here? What, what's going on over here that it can't go over here?
That is actually the only, I'm being told, the only spot on the property I can put the pool in.
Okay, why?
This is where the leach fields, the top there, right there.
Okay.
The box, the septics, come right out off the deck, here, right off the deck. And this is 50 feet, right there to the corner of the house, so I'd have to start the pool.
Yeah, why can't it go over here?
I was told that maybe 50 feet. This is the 50-foot line right there.
Right, so if you move it in and you put it right here, then you're looking for a one-foot variance instead of a.
The issue I have, I don't know with the box coming right off the deck, I don't know if I can even fit it in there at all. The other issue I have, which is unique, doesn't have to do with the topography, is I've been a police officer for 20 years now, in a very high crime location. The squad I've worked with has worked on murder-for-hire cases, has worked on gang cases with violent Central American gangs.
Okay.
We've had police officers fouled at home.
Okay.
Due to the elevation difference, you can see in the pictures, a pool here would be almost invisible to the road. The further.
It is, it's more visible. Yeah, I agree with you. There is a significant elevation difference from the height of the road here toward, because the tall trees are.
It's between 15 and 20 feet before the trees even hit.
Right, right. See, if you see the trees here, the guardrail is back there, so you can see the, the height of the road. And so when you're that close to something, it's harder to look immediately down than it is to look further across.
In my package, I put a view from the road, actually.
Yes.
The one I submitted.
Oh, here, this is yours. Yep.
Actually, those are recent ones I took today. The package I previously handed in shows the view from a car from the road. With this whole spot, I put a six-foot ladder in there to use justice reference.
Right, oh, that, okay, I was wondering, it looked like a surveyor's tripod. I wasn't quite sure what it was.
I just wanted to show that it would be almost invisible to the road. And I said, that, that's my concern. If it's planned with the pool on the floor.
What, I didn't hear that?
No, we just don't want him to keep repeating.
Got it, got it, got it.
Protect his children.
I don't know if we can pull it a little bit closer, though, and still keep it down with some.
Or do some additional screening, right, can we?
Or just, you know, some, I don't know how steep that slope is already, it's hard to tell by the picture.
It's a pretty steep slope. I mean, you can't walk up it without putting a hand on it.
Maybe I want to be able to move the pool seven, eight feet further away, it was 13 feet. Try to pull it a little bit closer. Again, we sort of mentioned earlier, we granted one because of the unusual nature of the property, but we have always been very reluctant to give variances on pools. So the more you can pull it away, the better, and maybe if you got it somewhat closer, also less of a variance if it required maybe a small retaining wall or something along the one side and a patio in between, I think it helps us.
No, not yet. Is there a tree missing here, too? Is there potentially, because all these trees are so in a line, and all of a sudden, there's a gap in your photo that I'm wondering if we can do.
I can see on my original package.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at. Here's this.
There's another map. It shows.
That's the aerial.
These trees are missing.
And there's a gap, yes.
I actually, uh, wrote to the town, they gave me approval to plant trees there. I think due to the salting that goes on in the winter, I've gone through about eight trees so far.
Okay.
And I've had much difficulty in getting the trees to take root.
Okay, we're going to ask you to go back to the podium, just so your voice is on microphone.
Sure.
Okay? All right, so this question is, is there another option to get you some more screening? I mean, when you look at the guardrail and you look at the photo that you took from the street in the car of your property, you can go in a little bit further and, and not have it visible, okay? And that's what we're, we're looking to minimize the, the variance that you need. All right, so. How much of a patio are you looking to put around the pool?
Depends how much my pool is, of course. I'd like to have a nice-sized patio area. I'd have to see how it shakes out without.
Breaking the bank?
Yes, exactly.
Got it.
I'm spending a lot of money on trees recently.
I, I understand completely. My well, it happens to be in, full of salt, so I understand completely. All right, um.
Can I just mention something?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, Mary, you mentioned about the.
If DEC requires a 100 feet, there's 100-foot buffer somewhere at the wetland bend. You're very, very close to that just with the pool. If you're going to put a patio, anything, you're going to require a wetland disturbance from the department, fully can issue a building permit, so that's going to tie it up. I'm thinking you should push this forward from that in time.
Because we won't be able to issue a building permit at the building department if you're, right now, I wouldn't issue it even showing it the way it is there without the DEC signing off on that, because it's just too close.
That's what I'm saying, you're going to really have that of surveyors to take that out, or make sure you don't go personal.
That's why I would just keep it away from that. With the patio, if you're putting a patio on the backside of the pool, you'll definitely be within that 100-foot.
About turning the pool.
It's better if you can to avoid the issue.
Right, right.
Turning the pool, so that it's not hitting the bad line, turning it, putting it sideways.
Where the tree's missing, where the trees are, just gets to that earlier issue I spoke about.
Right.
Where I'm trying my best to, to maintain some privacy. Once again, I'll gladly listen, I'll certainly, whatever suggestions you have, I understand, beggars can't be choosers. If it's a matter of feet here or a couple of feet there, I'll gladly comply with whatever needs to be complied with.
We have a couple of things. One is the variance. We are very reluctant to give them out for pools. It's relatively new stat, you're making it 25 feet away. But the other issues are with the DEC and stuff. I mean, again, you're not even going to have to get a permit for this, unless absolute proof you're not violating that, you're going to have to deal with that. That's not really our issue.
Right.
That's with the building department, whether they're happy with it, so by their suggestions, the further you keep it away, the more confident they are that you're not violating anything.
I actually.
So in a minimum, you're going to have to move it forward toward.
The house.
Toward your house.
I mean, you're going to want at least four feet, I think, around it for a patio to walk around it. You can't have, you know, two feet of somebody on the side, somebody else can't walk around.
I, I actually, I don't know how it's going to work out. I actually started paperwork with DEC to infringe upon it. I had meetings with them. Encroach. I don't know if it's going to bear any fruit, but.
Okay.
Things with me are very complicated. I was told it's not only the 100-foot buffer, but it is listed as a potential habitat for turtles.
Okay.
Going to blend in this turtle.
All right, the other issue is, if you're going to want a patio on this, right now, you're showing the edge of the pool is 12 feet away from your property line on that side.
Correct.
Okay? If you're going to want a patio there, you're going to need another variance for a patio.
I was unaware that I would need that.
Yeah, so again, all the more reason to push it out, just so that we're not, you know. He's got, that's where his septic is.
That's where the whole leach field is.
Yeah, that's where the septic is.
Right there, with a fence, would have been absolutely perfect, and that would have been good to go. Just move this up.
Yeah, no, no, I, I, I don't doubt that.
There is no other place to put it. And the buffer zone is actually two feet higher than where you want the pool. Two feet higher than where he's going to put the pool.
Yeah, it doesn't make sense.
But it's a buffer, it's not the. Yeah, base flood, that would be base flood elevation, but that's for, yeah, that, he's okay, because he's not. What it's going to, it's just going to make putting the, like the last one, it's going to make putting the pool in difficult. Do you have a groundwater problem, in terms of how deep the groundwater is, or not?
Not that I'm aware of. I mean, this is, I'm not an expert, but this is the worst wetlands I've ever seen. It's really bone-dry.
Oh, okay.
You never dug down anything in the.
I've never dug down, but I mean, it's, uh.
You could have wetland vegetation.
What's that?
You could have wetland soils or vegetation.
Yeah, sometimes the plantings, the plants will tell you.
It seems like thorn bushes back there.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, there's nothing specific here.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
What's the pleasure of the board? I'm concerned, I mean, how, how far can you move it in? That's what, because like I said, right now, you're going to, we need to know about your patio, because you're going to need a variance for that at the same time. So how far are you going to feel comfortable pushing it in?
Another 10 feet possibly?
I mean, honestly, well, another 10 feet from the, for the edge of it, or, you know, so that, with the 16 feet, you're now going to be 26 and 22, you're going to be 48 feet in from the property line for the other side of that pool.
It needs to be 25 feet away, right? Is that what we're talking about?
Yeah.
So if he moves it in 10, we only talk about a three-foot.
Three-foot variance, right.
I don't have a big deal with that, considering, given his other concerns.
And then if he moves it in 10, then he doesn't need the variance for the patio.
Yeah.
Does he, or he might still need like a one-foot variance?
No, patio requires 15-foot setback.
Well, it depends on how big a patio he wants.
You know what, you're in the front yard. We need 15-foot setback anyway.
It's a corner, it's a corner.
That's considered a front yard, because you're on a corner lot, you have two front yards. Pools are 25, but they're supposed to be behind the front line of the house. If you draw a line parallel to the road, it has to still be back here. So you need the variance for it being in the front yard. You still have the main take, you have to maintain the more, the stricter regulation with a 50-foot for the front yard.
So he's not, he's going to need a variance anyway.
Well, but I still, but, you know, that's, so, which is another reason why I'm not to be excited about it. It's just the road, so it's not like he's going next to a property, a neighbor or anything in terms of the variance. I don't know.
And I just wish he could achieve it with screening trees. That would be so much cheaper than.
Yeah, moving it away makes it more in front line of the house.
Right. Before I time you.
I remember.
Don't you remember the concerns there, people coming downhill, driving off the road and going into the pool?
Okay, but this is, he's got more space, he's got trees. I mean, that one had nothing. I mean, you actually had the road, and the pool was like six feet lower than the, the road line. This, and there was nothing. I mean, if the car went off, he went into the pool. There's, there's trees and stuff. It's not, it's not the same sense.
There is a guardrail, there's trees, and I don't know if the map reflects it. There's probably 20 feet of distance as well.
Yeah, you have a good 50 feet from the road to the edge of his property line. With that one in Hillside Lake, I was, when I drove by there, I was wondering, I wouldn't put my kids in a pool in that location.
Um, can, are you, how quickly are you looking to try to get this done?
My daughter's 13. I really was hoping to, while the finances, I got a car paid off a couple of months ago. I was really hoping to get started this summer on this project.
I, I really like you to be able to resubmit really what you're thinking of, a patio, whatever it is that, so we have a better sense with measurements, now that you've heard our discussion tonight, what it is that you want to come back with.
My, absolutely, whatever the board requires. My only issue is I do not, I'm, the patio size is going to depend on my finances when the pool is completed.
Understood, but you should, you have some vision. I mean, at least put the three feet, four feet in, around it, five feet. I mean, ADA requirements are five feet for a patio, but you, that's, you know, you have to tell us what you think is appropriate. We've got to get a better sense of what you're asking for.
And the concern is, yeah, I mean, because then we put you over to July, we're going to have something definite, but that one had a hearing in August, just so you understand what we're talking about.
And when we call your neighbors in, they need to be, they should really be able to see what it is that you're looking to do. So we need a better sense first. You've now heard us and our concerns, if you can rethink what it is that you're proposing. All right, and then we'll see you again next month?
Sure.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And item number 12, appeal 3683, Orthopedic Associates, Orthopedic Associates being represented by Chasen Companies is requesting a 50-foot front line variance for a proposed 12,000-square-foot medical building to be located at 1955 Route 52, Hobell Junction, as well as a 25-foot landscape buffer variance for the site pursuant to Section 194-116B of the zoning ordinance and Note 11 of the bulk regulations. Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Chris Philippi with the Chasen Companies, representing Orthopedic Associates this evening. We had submitted an application to the zoning board for the plan that's shown before you.
Okay.
Just to give you a little background here, Orthopedic Associates purchased the Junction Route 52 site in March of this year. Their intention is to build a two-story, 12,000-square-foot orthopedic, uh, structure here. They're looking to relocate their offices from Route 9 in Fishkill, from the Westage Building where they currently have. And, and some of the reasons behind the relocation kind of lends itself to the site plan that we developed here that we had submitted to the planning board in April for a sketch plan discussion. We then went further and submitted a full set of engineering plans for May. The plans that have been submitted reflect a variance for a 100-foot building setback west of the Taconic. We have a 50-foot setback on our plans. The current Junction Route 52 Restaurant was 63 feet away from the front yard. The landscape buffer requirement for medical offices is 50 feet. Currently out there right now, there is no buffer at all. Our desire here, in addition to presenting aesthetically pleasing structure, is, from the orthopedic standpoint, is, some of the reasons why they're actually leaving the Westage facility is the way in which the parking is oriented. You have parking on four sides of the building. They want to route their patients to one location, the entryway. They don't have separate parking for their doctors. This is actually an issue, because they actually have patients that, I don't want to use the word harass, but they want a diagnosis in the parking lot. They want a script in the parking lot. There are times when the doctor comes there, they're not there for that particular patient. They're coming from the hospital for, to see somebody else. They really desire to have that separate entryway and kind of be isolated. They, they also prefer, as I indicated, that their parent, that their patients have a straight shot to the front door. At the same time here, we've kind of worked through some sketch plans with the planning board. Their desire is to have some sort of a landscape buffer. Their intent was not to purchase this property, put a building in the center of the site, and push all the parking back up to the road as it exists today. They have some limitations on the west side of the property, being that there's a wetland and that there's an existing septic system.
Okay.
So we were before the planning board again last week, and we've been back and forth with some sketch plans. And what I thought would be worthwhile, because in either case, I would need a variance from the zoning board, whether it's, if I set the building back 100 feet, I'm still infringing upon the landscape buffer. If I set the building back 50 feet and provide some more of a landscape buffer in front of the building, I still need a buffer, I still need a landscape variance for the parking that's in. parking that's in the buffer, and I also need it for the building. So what I wanted to do tonight was kind of present to the board the two alternative layouts that we've developed. This is the original plan that we submitted as part of the application.
Okay.
It shows a fifty-foot buffer in front of the building, the building setback fifty feet from the property line. Once again, the current building's setback sixty-three feet. The desire is part of this actual layout, it also gives them the benefit of isolating the doctor parking, because the doctor parking is right here. This is the location part of the building. The other thing is, they want to kind of, you've seen there, I'm not sure if you're familiar with their structure, they refine the old Circuit City on Route nine in Poughkeepsie. It's kind of an image that they want to portray, a little bit more of a professional image, it's a bold statement. And their, the new architecture... Which I have before you... Kind of lends to that. They'd like to have it kind of pop out at you, they want you to see this.
Have you been to the architectural review board? Because we really have no say in what...
No, no, I wanted to bring this to you to show you the appearance of what they're looking to put within the buffer to kind of dress it up.
It's going to be hard to make it worse.
It's going to be hard to make it worse, what's there.
All right, you go back to the planning board next Tuesday?
I go back to the planning board next Tuesday, and here's the alternative plan that I think, based upon the dialogue, I'd like to show you.
Sure. So the parking area stays the same, except for that one little area of the lot?
Well...
The doctor's going to, right?
The doctors, the doctors are now parking in the front with the patients, and they're walking around to the side of the building where they enter, and this particular layout pushes the building further back to be a hundred feet from the property line. Once again, though, we encroach within the fifty-foot landscape buffer at that particular location. So in this case, we would need a variance for a landscape buffer. In the other case, we would still need a variance for landscape buffer for just the front parking, but we'd also need a one-hundred-foot, we don't need the one-hundred-foot setback for the building.
All right, so in any condition, you're still going to make it better than what's been out there already?
I'd say so.
Yeah, okay. So the dilemma is, if he goes to the planning board next week and gets approval, then honestly, he still has plenty of time to advertise, to meet our requirements, for us to have a public hearing in July. So rather than have him, you know, we, I had talked with Chris last week, we didn't want him to lose a month here, we want to encourage, you know, the businesses to be able to, you know, get in, there is a timeline that they have to be able to get out of their existing structure and get into this new facility here, so...
And I thought, because this is actually not just, not just a planning board issue, this is actually a zoning board issue, because there's variance, I really thought, to still come to you guys and kind of have some dialogue to, you know. I know the, the planning board, you know, I'd say Pam, I'd say there's probably a fifty-fifty split there in terms of their preference one way or the other. There are some people that wanted to minimize the front yard setback, try to keep it in line with the other buildings. I mean, the other buildings right now are pretty much in line with the existing restaurants, so they're not even within a hundred feet, but if you go down to the, if you go north, there's the supply store where you would help, they're actually closer than where this building would be. There's the real estate agent on the corner of Rotherell, and they're actually closer than the one-hundred feet, so I don't think I'm too far off.
Right. So the question is, is the board okay with either one of these alternatives, in that letting the planning board make the site plan decisions, that we can let them advertise for a public hearing for the next meeting, assuming they get decision from the planning board next week, so that we're keeping everything concurrent?
But what are we advertising for Plan A or Plan B?
Well, that's what he'll know next week after he's at the planning board.
Our preference is the...
Yeah, his preference is the first one that he showed us.
Is the original plan, because that meets the client's needs.
Either one's going to need a variance, either...
Will he have enough time to advertise when he knows next week? So I don't have a problem either way, or I was going to suggest we advertise for the more, the greater request, and if he drops it, then that's fine.
I agree. I'm good.
Either way.
From an aesthetics point of view, is there a preference to see landscaping in the front versus parking?
Well, it's not, it's plan review, it's the planning board's purview, it's not ours.
I mean, yeah, obviously, I wanted to make it look nice and some landscaping, but I'm sure the planning board will address that again, yeah.
Well, no, I mean, because you have a fifty-foot landscape buffer in front of the building, and I'm trying to improve it with meeting the fifty-foot landscaping requirement as opposed to putting...
So you're looking for the impressions of the zoning board to present to the planning board?
It always helps.
We're not going to do that.
We're neutral territory. We're Switzerland.
I've heard of a lot of other requests this evening, I figured out to chew from the hip. And by the way, there was a...
Motion to advertise. All in favor? Hi, so we will see you next month, you'll work with Pam to make sure the appropriate advertising is done to meet whatever the needs are of the city.
Sounds perfect, and just one, no, I know you were talking about that one application earlier from eighteen forty-one.
Yeah, the historic structure.
I recently saw on County Parthenon Access, that they have mapping now, it goes back to almost like nineteen twenty.
Okay.
And I don't know if that's worth...
Mapping or aerial photography?
Aerial photography that goes back, we just saw, I just saw that the other day, it was kind of like, wow, I didn't know they had that there.
Yeah, it's a pretty amazing scene.
That might give you some insight.
Seeing no properties that developed, yes.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, we'll see you next month. All right, we have a second call for Deborah O'Delli, this is item number two, appeal three six seven two, Deborah O'Delli and Mike, I'm sorry, Andrew Akimuladin. Ten Circle Drive, Hopple Junction, requesting permission to keep an existing twelve-foot by twelve-foot gazebo in front of the rear line of the house, meeting the required setbacks on a fifteen-foot sideline and fifteen-foot rear line variance for a proposed ten-foot by twelve-foot shed pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one oh seven B two of the zoning ordinance. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
All in favor? Hi, all right. Ms. O'Delli, we did ask before whether anybody was here present to speak about this, and nobody did, so, but obviously, since we're on camera, somebody had the opportunity to come now, because we did specifically say we will put this on at the end of the agenda. So again, we reviewed this with you. The issues that came up in terms of, you know, necessitating your request, um... Sorry, I want to get on the record some of the issues that we discussed, but I need your, I need to have your application in front of me. Uh-oh, hello. Here it is, okay. Okay, so you are on a corner lot.
Yes, ma'am.
Your septic fields are in the back, which precludes your ability to be able to put anything too far in the back.
Yes, ma'am.
You have, and so you, so really what you've proposed is putting the gazebo on the, if you're facing your house, the right side of your home, or it's there already, actually.
It's been there.
Yeah, it's right.
Before we even moved there, but they moved it back.
And it had previously moved to this location, okay. And we talked about on the other side, is there a dry well?
Yeah.
Okay, and so that restricts your ability to work with that part of your property. And you have the shed in the back, right, is that a... That was removed, okay, thank you, I didn't make that note on my plan. So are there any comments or questions from board members?
I'm okay.
All right. Oh, the power lines, okay, that's what's the bad thing. Okay. No questions from board members, is there anyone here to speak for or against the request from Deborah O'Delli and Andrew Akimuladin? I got it right the first time. Akimuladin, Ten Circle Drive, requesting permission to keep an existing twelve-foot by twelve-foot gazebo in front of the rear line of their house, meeting the required setbacks and a fifteen-foot sideline and fifteen-foot rear line variance for a proposed ten-foot by twelve-foot shed. That is what's in the corner there.
Yeah.
That's why they need... Yes, that's, we did have to get it, because there were some questions the first time we saw this, related to where it really was. All right, so having done a review of this, seeing nobody from the public, do I have a motion to oppose the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? And?
I'll leave it, okay, okay. This is an applicant, appeal number thirty-six seventy-two. Applicant is Deborah O'Delli and Andrew Akimuladin. Name of the project is fifteen, they're requesting a fifteen-foot sideline variance and a fifteen-foot rear line variance for a proposed twelve feet by twelve, ten feet by twelve feet shed, and a permission to keep twelve feet by twelve feet gazebo which meets all the required setbacks in front of the rear line of the house. The location of the place is, address is Ten Circle Drive, Hopple Junction. Resolution offered by zoning board member Aziz Hassan, whereas applicants have applied for a zoning board for a fifteen-foot sideline variance, sideline, sideline and fifteen-foot rear line variance for a proposed ten feet by twelve feet shed, and to be allowed to keep this existing twelve feet by twelve feet gazebo which meets the required setbacks in front of the rear line of the house pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one oh seven B two of the zoning ordinance, whereas this action is a type-two action under speaker, and no further action is required, and whereas the legal notice was published in the Southern District News on May twenty-eight, twenty fourteen, and whereas the zoning board of appeals here held a public hearing on June tenth, twenty fourteen, and whereas the zoning board of appeals finds that the granting of the variance would not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, or be a detriment to the community, the desired results cannot be achieved by some other means, as the applicant has a long, narrow lot, and their dry well and septic field take a lot of their usable area. The variance requested is not substantial, the proposed area variance will not have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood. Now therefore be resolved that the zoning board of appeals hereby approves the request made by Deborah O'Delli and Andrew Akimuladin, Ten Circle Drive, Hopple Junction, for a fifteen-foot sideline and a fifteen-foot rear line variance for a proposed ten feet by twelve feet shed, and allow, and allows them to keep their existing ten feet, a twelve feet by twelve feet gazebo which meets the required setbacks, but is in front of the rear line of the house pursuant to section one ninety-four dash one oh seven B two of the zoning ordinance. Be it further resolved that within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or the duly authorized member of the zoning board shall cause a copy of the resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant owner.
Is there a second?
Yes.
Votes as follows, Jim?
Aye.
Aziz?
Aye.
Tara?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
And myself, I, and your motion carries, you're all set.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you so much. Have a nice evening. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you.[1778.54]